Good evening, everyone. Oh, am I missing a... Hello? Where's our... Do you see marketing? All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started momentarily. So if you... All right. I think I'll go ahead and get started. It is 7 o'clock, right? Is that the clock right? Okay. All right, so I'll call this meeting to order. What I'd like you to do, what I'll ask you to do, is to join me for a moment of silence before we do Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll move on to the agenda. So if you'd join me in standing. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Oh, yes, and so before we go to roll call, Cassandra, make sure I say your full name, is gonna just share with you some information.
Good evening. We are pleased to provide Spanish interpretation services for those in attendance this evening. This includes interpretation during the meeting for those who want to... And for those who want to provide public comment. If you're interested in these services, please visit the table outside the commission chambers. Estamos en contado de ofrecer servicios de interpretación en español para los presentes esta noche. Incluye interpretación durante la reunión y para las personas quienes le gustarían hacer comentario público. Si tenga interés en ese servicio, por favor visite la mesa afuera de la cámara de comisión.
Thank you. All right, next we'll have roll call.
Commissioner Repart?
Here.
Commissioner Moody?
Present.
Commissioner Kelly?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Lanier?
President.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, and commissioners, can I get a motion to excuse Commissioner O'Connor?
To move.
To support.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, so next is our first opportunity for public comment tonight. So we have actually a couple opportunities for public comment. We have the first opportunity, and the first opportunity is specifically for items that we're voting on. So earlier today, we met, we had a number of meetings, and there is a list of items that we discussed. So if you're here to speak specifically about something that we're voting on, I'll open up that public comment period momentarily. And then later on, we have one scheduled public hearing. So if you are here tonight to be heard on the MDOT improvements and the noise variance, I'm gonna ask you to stay put, and I'll open up that public comment a little bit later on. And then at the end of the meeting, we have opportunity for public comment. So I'll open up the first opportunity for public comment. Again, these are items that we're voting on. A few rules about this. I ask that you share your name, the city that you live in. We'll give you up to three minutes to speak. And for this first opportunity, I ask you to specifically point out what item you're speaking to. And then there's a clipboard over there that you can put your name so that we get it accurate in the minutes. So hello, welcome.
Hi, thank you. I'm Jane Whittington, and I've spoken to you before from Grand Rapids. I just want to say that I'm so disappointed that you have chosen to remove the prohibition on open carry in your firearms ordinance. There seems to be absolutely no reason that I can think of that anyone should need to carry a gun with them in public. Our children are already traumatized by school shootings, and by the way, there have been 240 of them since Sandy Book, and by active shooter drills in the school. And they shouldn't have to be further traumatized by seeing people in public carry guns, who are people that are trying to prove something that I don't quite understand what it is. Gun violence isn't a problem that's going away, and we should, as responsible citizens and lawmakers, take every step we can to stop the violence. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. All right, others wish to be heard? Hi, welcome.
Hi, my name is Bill Whittington, and I agree with what that rather attractive woman just said. I'm a gun owner and a veteran, and I do not believe that open carry is a good thing for Grand Rapids. It doesn't add to the attractiveness of the city, and it upsets and scares many people. So I urge you to reinstate the open carry ban on the ordinance under consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. All right, others wish to be heard?
Thank you. My name is Cindy Coleman, and by accident, I moved out of Grand Rapids, just a little bit into the city of Walker. But I do participate in Grand Rapids events. I'm a member of Moms Demand Action, which is a local Grand Rapids... We have our own chapter, and I've also participated in mask events, Moms Against Street Killings in Grand Rapids. And I agree with what the previous two people said, as far as Jane not understanding why people would want to carry open... To open carry, the only reason I can think of is to look threatening and powerful. And the threat, I know is perceived, but it's perceived by children, which leads me to something I would like to read to you that I was aware that at the Grand Rapids Parade, there were some costumed characters, including one man who was supposedly demonstrating a superhero and carried what looked like an automatic weapon. He was blessed, you know, was in black, he had on boots, he looked like a soldier, maybe a guerrilla type. Anyway, I was concerned about that, and the people that I spoke to about it also were concerned, including children. And so I was able to get ahold of Sarah Fails, who is the 2019 Grand Rapids Junior Chamber VP and co-chair of the Parade Committee. And I spoke about the concern that I had, and I wasn't sure that who this person was or why he was carrying what looked like an automatic weapon. And part of her response was, "In light of the current events and heightened awareness in society at large, the choice to bring the replica gun was not the wisest. It did have the required orange tip on it, but the costume and prop were startling in the context of the parade. To avoid this sort of problem in the future, the Parade Committee will be creating new guidelines and policies for participants, primarily that any character involved in the parade will not be able to walk the route with any form of weaponry. We will be making this clear to all entries, as well as posting on a public page of the website. I hope these steps will alleviate concerns and that you'll be able to enjoy the parade again next year." Which leads me to the thought of those people that are standing in the crowds, who might also have a weapon in hand in the open, that that would be similarly, and maybe even more so threatening than this. And I appreciate the steps that they took, and I also appreciate that being on the cusp of what I hope will be gun sense legislation, that you will vote on the right side of history, and that will be to not allow open carry. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman, and thanks for bringing that to our attention. Appreciate it. Hello, Ms. Williams, welcome.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. I'm Mary Alice Williams, and I sent all of you an email today, but because of the lateness of it, I'm not sure you all had a chance to read it. So I want to reiterate what I said. I am in strong opposition to the proposed ordinance that would repeal or replace Chapter 153, Section 9, Point 173 of the Code. I am in favor of provisions of the existing ordinance as sensible and sorely needed means of protecting human lives, city streets, and public spaces. Some of you were here not so long ago when I was ejected from this meeting for carrying a sign. Evidently, it's within your authority to eject people with signs, but not people with guns. And I recognize it's a presumably overriding authority of the state, but I urge you to challenge that, as your Safety Committee has asked you to. It seems to me that local municipalities are willy-nilly conceding the power to control the public safety and public good of their local jurisdictions. You might as well just fold up your tents if you can't ban plastic bags, ban firework noises, ban guns. I think it's all of a piece to erode the responsibility and obligations for which you were elected. I think that it is important for you to not abandon those obligations. I think we all, all of us in the municipal area, all of us who have reason to visit Grand Rapids, rely on them as we go about our city streets, participate in such expressions of open discourse as here and other places, and conduct other ordinary activities of public life without the expectation of fear or intimidation by armed civilians. I, for one, cannot tell who a good guy with a gun is from a bad guy with a gun. I've been in the parking lot downstairs and have seen little men with their guns open carrying, and I have called the police, because I have no way of judging what's in their mind or who they are. I really hope that tonight you will find a way to assert your authority for local control as provided by the Michigan Constitution and for the common good. Vote against the replacement of Section 9173 and in favor of its retention as part of your ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. All right, others wish to be heard? Hi, welcome.
Hi, thank you. My name is Annie Vandenberg. I'm a resident of the Second Ward, and I'm here to speak on the same issue that the previous commenters were. First of all, I want to thank all of you for having this be such... Be an issue that is being considered continuously, and as a volunteer with Moms Demand Action, I appreciate the work that you've already done on it. As a teacher, I do have to say that in wearing some of my buttons and, you know, some of the things I have on my car, the students at my school, their parents have approached me and been very interested in what the group stands for, and have sometimes been surprised when I explain to them what is currently allowable in the city of Grand Rapids. So this is something that's very much on the mind of students and parents. As a parent myself, I appreciate what the police have been doing lately and what you have proposed with replicas. I have a very large son, whose friends have gone through stages of liking to play with airsoft guns, and it's terrified me, thinking of them walking down the street with them in their backpacks, or... So that's, as a parent, I really appreciate that. As a Grand Rapids resident, I really appreciated the fight over the last few years to stand up to what I consider, just plain and simple, to be bullies of the open carry movement. I feel like the things that have happened because of that stand have been really hard-fought and very important, and I would hate to see all of the work that has gone into that sort of go down the drain, because I promise you that with a repeal of this section of the language, that it will absolutely be seen as a concession. So I encourage you to please consider reinstating that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Vandenberg. All right. Okay, I'm gonna close that opportunity for public comment, and that'll take us to approval of the minutes. So commissioners, can I get a motion to approve the minutes from November 12?
Some who...
All right, any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next that will take us to petitions and communications.
The first communication is from Charlotte Bindis regarding their resignation from the Civil Service Board.
That is referred to Committee on Appointments.
And communication received from Jack Hoffman regarding the ordinance to repeal and replace Chapter 153 of Title IX of the Code of City, Grand Rapids, entitled Firearms.
And that is also received and filed. All right, next that will take us to reports of city officers.
First one's a Comptroller's Report for the period of November 7, 2019 through November 20, 2019, the amount of $25,72,133.96.
That is received and filed.
Treasurer's Report for the period of November 4, 2019 through November 15, 2019.
That is received and filed.
City Clerk submitted copies of the General Retirement System Annual Actuarial Evaluation for the year ending June 30, 2019.
That's received and filed.
And the city clerk submitted the Kent County Board of Canvassaries Report certifying the results of the November 5, 2019 municipal general election.
And that is also received and filed. All right, next that will take us to our consent agenda. So our consent agenda, our items on our agenda tonight that we talked about and voted on earlier today in one of our meetings where there was a unanimous vote. So with one voice vote tonight, we'll adopt those items. Commissioners, can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
I move, Mayor, with the removal of C-3.
C-3. Community Development?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we'll remove Community Development, Item 3, so that will move off consent. Commissioners, anything else? All right. I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, so that will make two items off consent tonight. So commissioners, there's one item that is removed off consent because of correction in the dates, and so tonight that is off consent so that we can make sure that the dates are correct, and that is the first resolution. Do you want to read that one?
Yeah, so a resolution approving a request... Oops, sorry. Resolution approving a request for Mayor Rosalind Bliss to travel to Washington, D.C. in January. I believe that would change was to add a day on the front end.
A day on the front and coming back on Saturday instead of Sunday.
Correct.
Yep.
So moved.
So it's the 21st... Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next that will take us to our second item that's been removed, and that is CD, Item 3.
A resolution authorizing the execution of a quick claim deed to release conditions for seven properties in the Baxter neighborhood that were previously conveyed via a conditional quick claim deed to Habitat for Humanity of Kent County Incorporated.
All right. The move?
Support?
All right, and Commissioner Lanier, you want to talk about this one?
Absolutely, Mayor. City Manager Washington, you know, a few months ago, talked about the need for us to start pulling items that we want to have conversations about during these nightly meetings, and I thought this was one of those items that would be good to talk about, because it's related to housing. And because we make these decisions in the morning when we don't have an audience, and we know that we have a number of participants who come to our meetings in the evenings who talk about housing and the need, and so I just wanted to pull this item so that Deputy City Manager DeLong could talk about this agenda item so that we can hear about the housing that's going into the Baxter neighborhood.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner, for doing that. I too saw the email with some additional details, and I think it's important to share publicly.
Absolutely.
So thank you.
Thank you, everybody, and good evening. So this is an opportunity before you to accelerate the development of seven homes in the Baxter neighborhood through Habitat for Humanity. So these homes have a relatively long history, or these... Sorry, they're vacant lots, have a very... Kind of a long history. They were originally conveyed to a private developer as part of a request for proposal in 2000s to try to... It sent private development within the Baxter neighborhood around Joe Taylor Park. That resulted in one home being completed and one home being partially completed. And at the same time, Commission at that time was... Well, Commission is always wise, but at that time, they were particularly wise. And they took a backup offer from Habitat for Humanity that basically said that if the private developer didn't perform, that Habitat would assume ownership of the properties and develop homes. So that's... That took a while to happen. They have now... They're now in a position to develop the homes, and will do so in 2020. The criteria that Habitat use are that they will be homes that are for owners that are at 60% AMI, unless they are a veteran. And if you're a veteran, you can go up to 80% AMI, so you get a little more room if you're a veteran. And they have a kind of unique way of reserving the homes. So what they will do is essentially, they sell the home to the family that is selected for what the family can afford to pay based on their income and qualifications and the rules that Habitat follows. And then the balance is contributed equity by Habitat. And that's considered a gift of equity that is forgivable over 10 years, and it's a deed and a contract that Habitat has with the family. So it's forgivable over 10 years. If the family lives there for more than 10 years, then the only restrictions that are left for them is that they need to be sold for ownership, not for homeownership or owner occupation, not for rental property at that time, and also have to be resold to an income-qualified family. So the program has worked pretty well for Habitat, and they are good at what they do. So in terms of how persons are selected for the... To be a Habitat homeowner, they maintain a list, and as homes become available, they solicit from the list, they take applications, they screen the applications, and they move forward from there. So the list usually has about 200 families on it, and once or twice a year, they say that they send an application to everybody on the list, so everybody has a shot at applying for a particular home. So that's the basic outline of how they operate and what they do, and you can see on the map... Thank you, Joel. That... Mr. City Clerk. That these are the homes in the area, and they are generally in the area of the Baxter neighborhood, and some of them are adjoining the Joe Taylor Park.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions or comments?
No, I just appreciate, too, Commissioner Lanier is removing this from consent. We do want to make it clear that we are engaged in efforts to provide more housing. We will soon... Or this commission will soon take up the issue of the Housing Fund and Advisory Board. And we talked this morning about some solutions. They range from land trusts to equity stake, working with Habitat, even calling on members of the community, because it's difficult to subsidize these, but if we could do it one house at a time, perhaps we could get businesses or even churches to adopt a house and help us with this effort. So just want to make sure that the community is aware that we're still plugging away at this very important issue.
So, and I just thank you, Commissioner. I took the discussion that we had today and forwarded it on to our Housing Practice Leader.
Thank you.
And so we'll be... He'll be adding that to the research that he does on our behalf, and we'll be having a report on that in the first quarter of next year.
Thanks.
Thanks. All right, any other questions? All right, I'll call a question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, commissioners, next that will take us to ordinances to be adopted, and we have three items before us tonight. So we'll start with the first ordinance.
The first one is an ordinance amending Section 1 of the Budget Ordinance 2019-19 for fiscal year 2020, Amendment Number 9.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
To support.
All right, Commissioner Jones, from our Fiscal Committee, you want to tell us about this?
Yep, got a few items I want to raise up, Mayor. One is from the Fiscal on this morning. We had a reimbursement from the Engineering Department requested and recognized and appropriated reimbursement for the preliminary design phase services in connection with the expansion of the Grand Rapids Public Museum. We also had a grant that we received, a grant continuation from the Michigan Department of Justice for the Metropolitan Enforcement Team Program. And lastly, the Engineering Department is requesting to recognize and appropriate sale proceeds from the sale of city property to Kent County for the construction of a new parking lot, and there was no change to the contingent balance.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, any questions? All right, this is a roll call vote tonight.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
Yes.
Commissioner Repart?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, and can I get a motion to give this immediate effect?
So moved.
To support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, now it'll take us to our second ordinance tonight.
The next one is an ordinance amending Section 1.46 of Chapter 3 of Title 1 of the Code of the City of Grand Rapids entitling voting precincts to update the boundaries of certain precincts.
All right. Support?
All right. City Clerk, anything to add on that?
Just a reminder of what we're doing. We're combining Precinct 711 in the First Ward into one precinct that will now be called Precinct 11, so number 7 will be removed from the list, but we won't be changing any other numbers.
Okay, great. All right, any questions, commissioners? All right, this is a roll call vote tonight.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
Yes.
Commissioner Repart?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes. It carries. All right, that'll take us to our third ordinance to be adopted tonight.
Ordinance repealing Chapter 153 of Title IX of the Code of the City of Grand Rapids entitled firearms and replacing it with weapons ordinance.
All right. Can I get a motion?
Support?
To support.
All right, moved and supported. Commissioner Kelly, you want to start us off on this one?
Yes, Mayor. Actually, I would like to... I wish to amend the motion to retain Section 9.173 carrying of Chapter 153, which states, "No person shall carry any firearm upon his or her person in any public street, alley, or other place open to the public in the city of Grand Rapids unless, one, the person has been issued a valid license to do so as provided by Act 372 of the Michigan Public Acts of 1927 as amended; or, two, all ammunition has been removed from the chamber cylinder clipper magazine of the firearm, and the firearm has been noticeably rendered inoperable by being broken down or disassembled or is completely enclosed within a case or other similar container." Now, if you would bear with me a minute, I would like to preface my remarks by saying that I do believe that the mayor and city commissioner are in support of the language in this proposed weapons ordinance, regulating the use of look-alike, mnemonic, replica, and imitation guns, which we discussed openly and transparently in an effort to address real public safety concerns relating to their use. As we look to building... To build trusting relationships with our community, especially our youth, the potential for negative interactions due to the manufacture of these toy weapons has forced us to consider penalties resulting from their use. One of the goals that we set out to achieve was to embrace the concept of police and community working together for a safer community. Chief Payne has shown us how closely these toys resemble real guns, and we know that any one of these scenarios could occur. For example, a child could be unintentionally harmed when a so-called toy gun is mistaken for a real gun. An officer's split-second decision could be compromised due to confusion over whether a gun is toy or real. Or a resident could call dispatch to report seeing a real gun, when in fact, it was fake. Any one of these scenarios can undermine the trust our department is working so hard to build. I believe that trust is undermined if we eliminate Section 9.173. While, for example, Moms Demand Action came in support of the ordinance, the weapons ordinance, they, like most of us, understood that they were supporting the regulations around imitation, replica, and mnemonic guns. But again, Section 9.173 was not given as much attention or conversation, and I'm quoting our city attorney here, who in a memo on October 33, I think, put it very succinctly. It wasn't given as much attention or conversation compared to the more substantial changes to regulate fake guns. So a decision by the commission to address this particular section can always be taken up at its discretion in the future, of course, but in that memo, we recognized that there was some confusion. They, like groups like Moms Demand Action, the Safe Places Alliance, and so on, and members of the public, would not have supported removal of this section if they had known that it was there. We even were confused when we did not receive a strikeout version in our executive session. Transparency is so critical in building trust with our constituents in an era of ever-increasing... An ever-increasing number of shootings, both mass and otherwise, the commission must be a good steward of the public trust. Safe Places Alliance, for those of you who aren't familiar, is a group that has been meeting here for about five years, five or six years, whose membership includes several attorneys, and they believe that our ordinance as currently written does not, in fact, violate state law, and that we should request that the state attorney general weigh in on this issue. It makes sense to have local control over weapons in our public spaces when they are actually lethal. So I would again like to amend the motion to retain Section 9.173 carrying of Chapter 153.
Okay, is there support for the motion? So we have the ordinance, the amended ordinance before us, the amendment, I should say. Commissioners, any other questions or comments about the amendment to retain that section? Commissioner Repart?
I don't have a question about that amendment, but I would like to make an additional one. Do we have to do that separate? Okay.
Let's do this one first.
We'll do this one first.
All right, so let me call the question for... And do I have to do roll call? Or no, I can just call the question?
Correct.
Call the question for the amendment to put back in that section.
Mayor, before you call the question, can we have discussion?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
So I want to... Commissioner Kelly, the section that she read off was from an existing ordinance, and this is a repeal and replace, so it's a totally new ordinance. So... I'm sorry, I have a gum in my mouth, sorry. But I want to make sure that if we... The section that she read, like, where's the placement of that? Because it's not going to have the same number, because it's a totally different ordinance. So I just want to... I think we need to talk through that, so we fully understand what it is we're approving and where it goes. I don't know, Joel, if you could bring up the ordinance, so we can see what's the best section, and city attorney, if you have an idea of, in this new ordinance, where this language belongs?
Actually, I did hear from Attorney Riwa about this, and she said if I read it this way, it would be correct, to answer your question.
Okay.
So to, to add on to that, I have the, the suggested motion in it. So it was in 1, 9.173, and it's in the new 9.173.1.
Okay, okay, just wanted to make sure we were clear about.
Thank you for that. That's a, that's a good point of clarity, so. So, so questions about the, the motion? Any other, the amendment? Thank you, the amendment. All right. I'll call a question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, the amendment carries, and now I will turn it to Commissioner Part, who has another amendment he would like to see.
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, would like to suggest an amendment in the new replica gun chapter to Section 9.180 penalty. So since this chapter is a new addition to our code, and there's a broad spectrum, many of them outlined by Commissioner Kelly, of potential situations where it would require enforcement, potentially ranging from kids playing at the park with a replica gun, or people truly brandishing them to frighten others. Like Commissioner Jones expressed when we discussed this last time, I'm hesitant to make this an automatic misdemeanor. So therefore, I'm interested in changing the presumption of the penalty from an automatic misdemeanor to allow for a first-time civil infraction. This would allow officers to use their discretion and leverage a significant fine for certain scenarios as a strong warning, and if the situation warranted further punishment, the individual could be charged with a misdemeanor. And then for second offenses, the presumption would return to how it's stated currently in the policy.
Okay.
Support.
Okay, I have a motion and support, so I'll open that proposed amendment up for discussion.
Clerk would like to ask a question.
Okay, so Clerk wants a clarification?
Commissioner Repart, do you have that in writing?
I have a, a version that I wrote, and...
I will need a copy of that version specifically because our standing rules talk about ordinances and things in, in writing.
Yeah.
So wasn't aware that there was a potential of that one. So, so if I can have that in writing so we can make sure that it's properly...
Should I read what I have here directly? Or what would you prefer?
Can you email that?
I can email it.
That would be great, thank you.
Okay, I'll do that.
Technology. Point of order. Is what he has that he's requesting, is it going to go in the ordinance? If it is, then for my sake, I need it to be read so I can know what I'm voting on.
Okay, so I'll ask him to read it again.
And if I can make a comment?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you want to make a comment first?
Okay. So we, the Law Department, we discussed this a lot, and one of the reasons that we said misdemeanor is because of the serious nature of, that we have this uptake of replica guns that look like real guns. And keep in mind that we're talking about firearms, pneumatic weapons, and imitation guns. So we're talking about the consequences for all three of those, not just one section. And the ordinance in all three of those sections, we're talking about people that actually use those weapons to brandish, which means to point and put someone in fear. And we felt that it was significant enough of an issue that it warrants a misdemeanor, so we've asked that you reconsider.
All right, well, let, let me hear from the Commissioners who made the motion and seconded it, now that they have clarity about the impact.
Sure.
So I'll turn back to Commissioner Part, and then I'll open it up for questions.
Yeah, I certainly think it's serious, too. And I think the way that I have it written here, it, it retains officer discretion to hand out a misdemeanor, should it warrant that. But I think that, given the fact that this is new, given the fact that it will impact youth and children, I think that I would hate to see somebody young get a misdemeanor for a mistake, especially before we can do enough education around, around the new ordinance. And, but the way that, I think the way we can warn it, word it, just because the presumption is a civil infraction doesn't mean that somebody still can't get a misdemeanor for, for brandishing a replica gun. And so I think that just, in, in general, I'm interested, just like we did with the noise ordinance that we're going to vote on in a moment, changing the presumption so that we're not kind of tacking on fences that stick with people for the rest of their life potentially, and when we don't need to do that. And so I think that I would prefer to give officers discretion and at least allow the option of not giving a misdemeanor rather than that being an automatic. That's, that's where I'm at.
All right, and Commissioner Jones? I know you, you brought it up when we talked about this at COW, and I know you and Commissioner Part and I have had conversations about some of our other efforts and desire to look at other offenses and decriminalize them. So do you want to weigh in on this?
Yes, I, I actually appreciate City Attorney's mention of how this particular language or the, the recommendation to change the language could also be inclusive of any firearm, pneumatic gun, bowcrossbow, other device capable of expelling a projectile or imitation firearm. But I also agree with my colleague in that this does come down to officer discretion. I think that there's just, I think it's, it's, because it's, it's a, it's, it's new, and there is real concern about having a charge that could stick with one's record for a lifetime, I think that we should, in many ways, proceed with caution. And so there's nothing that says that we cannot change this ordinance if the activities in the community require or call for that. But I think to begin, I think it is, it would be wise for us to, again, proceed with caution and begin from a place of, of really doing our best to make sure that we in no way criminalize children. And so that is my, that remains my greatest concern, and I do find some peace in the potent, and, and again, having this fall back to the discretion, the discretion of the officer. And, and also, you know, making sure that we are doing what we had committed to do when we first started to talk about that, about this, which is to make sure that we are overcommunicating to the community about the penalty or the repercussions of children who are caught with, with said weapons. And so I think that we have an obligation and responsibility, but I think it would be also, again, very wise on our part to begin from a place of not being so punitive, but really focusing on doing our part to make sure that if it, again, if it warrants it, if it, if it warrants a change to be more aggressive, we, we have that discussion later. But I think to start out, I think that we should, I, I'm very much in favor of the language that my colleague is, has provided.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lanier?
Yes, Commissioner Repart, can you please read?
Sure.
The language so that I can fully hear the language.
So it's Section 9.180 penalty. "The presumption shall be that any person who violates any provision of this chapter shall be subject to a civil infraction fine of $500 for the first offense, and shall be guilty of a misdemeanor for any subsequent offense. Upon conviction, they shall be subject to a fine of up to $500 or imprisonment for up to 90 days or both. However, officers shall retain the ability to use discretion and may deem any incident as a misdemeanor when necessary."
And that last sentence about the discretion of the officers is an addition that you added. Am I correct, or was that in the original language?
Well, I, all of that is new. Yeah, I'm sorry, all of that is new.
So, so I actually am hearing the perspective that you're sharing this evening. However, I think, I think policies should include as little subjectivity as possible. And I actually feel like adding a clause that talks about officer discretion allows one person to be treated differently than another. And so, because today, this officer may have an interaction with this kid and this person, and they may respond to it one way, and then another officer across town at the very same moment may have a different response. And so what we potentially could get from that are inequities in how it's being administered. So I'm not in opposition of reducing the misdemeanor to the civil infraction, but I am not supportive of adding a very subjective clause that then allows for the potential of inequity.
Sure. Well, let me, a couple thoughts. I mean, I would be fine with taking that out of there, because my understanding is that with everything in our code, there's a presumption, but they, the officer has the ability already to use their discretion to go above that initial presumption. And so I could be understanding that inappropriately. And if we took it out, that, that last sentence, then my understanding is that that still would be true, though, is that there's still discretion for, for any given situation.
I think probably less the officer and probably the Law Department along with the Police Department.
Right, 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 right. Kind of combo.
City Attorney?
I'm wondering if it would help to know that it actually comes to the City Attorney's Office for the charge, and so what happens is the officer writes a police report that comes to the City Attorney's Office, and it's the City Attorney that will review those, and then we decide whether or not that there's a charge that's going to be made. And if it warrants a reduction or some sort of diversion or dismissal, then we'll do that. So it's not just the officer on the street, but it's also that second layer of, when the City Attorney's reviewing it and said, no, we, we do that all the time, that if we don't want a young person to have a charge, we'll work with them, we'll do community service, or we'll do something to try to prevent them from having that on their record. Say this is the first time they've ever been in trouble, we try to work with them so that they don't have that on their record.
Sure.
All right, Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Kelly, did you have your hand up?
No, no.
Okay.
I want a clarification, but you have been providing it, thank you.
Any, any other questions or comments, and then I'll call the question on the amendment? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, so just, I'm wondering if, just trying to get a better understanding. So is the, the suggestion from Commissioner Lanier is that we remove that last portion from Section, the, the section? Is that what you're also thinking now, or no? Are you, are you looking to...
I would be fine with that.
Yeah, okay.
I think I was wanting to make sure that the police officers knew that they did have discretion for when it is a serious incident.
So the motion that's on the floor still has that?
Right.
And, and you have the authority to amend?
So let me, let me amend it now to say this. "The presumption shall be that any person who violates any provision of this chapter shall be subject to a civil infraction fine of $500 for the first offense, and shall be guilty of a misdemeanor for any subsequent offense. Upon conviction, they shall be subject to a fine of up to $500 or imprisonment for up to 90 days or both."
I support that.
That's more clear.
I support that.
Okay, so the amendment was amended. The proposed amendment was amended, and Commissioner Jones just supported that.
Just one more thing. Would we consider just doing that for the section on imitation guns?
Yeah.
And not for firearms?
Absolutely.
Pneumatic weapons.
And pneumatic weapons.
Absolutely.
Okay.
That's what I'm talking about, this chapter. But I...
Because that section encompasses all of them.
Sure.
So we could separate Kristin...
Add another point that's specific to the...
We can keep it the same for those sections, but the point that I am making is simply about replica guns.
Replicas.
Yes.
Imitation?
Imitation.
Okay, okay.
Kristen?
Toy, like, maybe we need to have, like, multiple definitions.
Kristen, we're on the same page. We separate out...
Yes, but I think I would need a motion to parcel out those specific sections.
Some of.
Okay, she can't make the motion.
Let me try this.
So, so let me get clarity along, around this motion. So Commissioner, Commissioner Part, if you want to make, clarify one more time?
Yes.
And make it clear that the language change related to first offense being a misdemeanor with second being, or first offense being a civil infraction and second being a misdemeanor specific to replica guns?
Yes.
That would be helpful.
Okay, so if, I think if I just change this wording, the, we'll keep the chapter under penalty in there, although that chapter, that little section might need to be amended, too. "The presumption shall be that any person who violates any provision of the imitation gun section of this chapter shall be subject to a civil infraction fine of $500 for the first offense, and shall be guilty of a misdemeanor for any subsequent offense. Upon conviction, they shall be subject to a fine of up to $500 or imprisonment for up to 90 days or both."
And I want that as a second bullet under the penalty?
You got it.
Is the rest of your motion?
You got it.
All right. Okay, so we, we have a newly amended proposal with more clarity that it's related to one section of this ordinance.
Okay, so I need clarification, so we make sure we have this, because this is going to go in the Code of Ordinances. So we'll make sure, so we're going to hit, in 9.180, we're going to have subsection 1, which is a penalty for two, two of the things, and a subsection 2, which deals with imitation firearms.
You got it.
Correct.
That's right, okay.
So Kristen, is that a, are we good with, we're going to have section 1 and 2?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, Commissioners, any other questions about the, the current amendment before us? All right, then I'm going to call the question on that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. And now do I need to go back and do roll call for the ordinance?
Unless there's any other amendments.
And the, the, as amended? Okay, so Commissioners, any other comments? City Attorney?
I think we still have to deal with the effective date.
If they wanted to.
Well, we, we do have to.
Okay.
Because it's 30 days, and we're working on the educational part of it.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
So we need an amendment for the effective date.
Okay. And, and did we decide the effective date now being February? I don't think we had a conversation.
I think we're out to April 1st.
Still April?
Kristen, do you remember our effective date? Are we April 1st or March?
We were recommending potentially April 1st to allow for the education campaign.
Okay, so Commissioners, can, will one of you entertain making a motion to adjust the effective date to April 1?
I move that we adjust the effective date to April 1, 2020.
Support.
All right, so Commissioners, any questions about that? I know all of us received information on a proposed education campaign. All right, I'll call the question on the motion of the amendment. Can I get all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. Okay, so now we have the ordinance before us, the amended ordinance before us, with the three amendments that we just approved. And this is a roll call vote, so I will turn to our City Clerk.
Let me get back in order here.
Right.
Commissioner Lanier?
Yes.
Commissioner Repart?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, it carries. All right, Commissioners, thank you for your work on that. I know all of us have been actively engaged in this conversation and listening to a lot of feedback from the community, so we appreciate you coming out and also working with us over the last couple of weeks. I really appreciate your, your advocacy on this critical issue. So next, that will take us to resolutions. And Commissioners, we have one resolution before us tonight, and that's a resolution to make an appointment to fill the vacant City Controller position. So I, oh, go ahead, I'll open it up for conversation or a motion?
So moved.
No, I would, I'd like to...
Well, you have to name a person.
Yeah, you need a...
So, so far, so we can have a discussion, or we can make a motion for one of the candidates, and if there's a second, we can talk about that, and then I can call the question.
Can we do discussion first?
Sure, yeah. So Commissioners, we, so those of you in the audience, and I see candidates here tonight, we had our former City Controller resign and take a position out of state, and so after that, this body worked with our City Clerk to post the position of Controller. It is an elected position, but when it is vacant, it is up to this body to fill that position. We posted the position for an entire month. We received two applications. We interviewed those individuals, this full body did, a couple of weeks ago, and now it's before us tonight to make a determination. So that's a little background. All right, Commissioners, we had two candidates, I can read those. We had Mr. Doug Zanstra and Mr. Charles Maxwell France, who goes by Max, and we had a good a good interview, an opportunity to get to know them. Now, some of us have heard feedback from folks who know them. They both have some significant credentials, and I'll open it up.
Yes, I, I'm really ready, I think, to make a motion for Mr. France for the, to fill the vacancy for the comptroller position. I think he interviewed well, and the only area of pause that I have right now is his availability. He was very clear about his limited availability, and I know we, well, I think I asked if he could make connections with the comptroller's office so that he could then work with them to create a schedule to see what would work best. The feedback that I've heard from that conversation was he was interested in evenings and weekends, and that is outside of the parameters that, that works best for that office. And so I'm wondering if there was room for some contention offer, because, you know, I heard that information quite late, to make sure that they can come to terms, because I think it's important that, although it is part-time, and I agree with that, you know, I've been here this morning all day. I've been here since this morning. And so there'll be.
A full agenda.
Yeah, so there will be some expectation for some weekdays, and I think during the interview, he talked about making himself available for fiscal, but I think it's beyond that, and so I don't know, you know, how do we have those conversations, you know, if he's present, and if we, maybe we can ask that question tonight, then maybe we can get that resolved immediately and could move forward, but I just, I just want to make sure that's good for him, because he was quite clear that the flexibility he had was pretty prescriptive.
We can, we can have that conversation. We, so just a couple of things about process, so we could, if there's support for appointing him, the oath of office actually isn't until for another week, or two weeks, the 17th, so I think that would provide some time to kind of work through that.
Okay.
And have those conversations. With that being said, you know, I know I said this during the, during the interview process as well, you know, I do think that most individuals, all of us included, we have other jobs, and you kind of figure out how to make it work.
Right.
Once you know what the scope of that job is, and I think all of us have ebbed and flowed over the years as we've figured that out, and so I anticipate that that would be the case as well.
Yeah, and I think one of the unique features of this position is that there are direct reports, so I think there are about three or four people who would report directly to this elected person, and then the rest of the department makes up about 15 people, and so there's a difference in that sense from kind of the work that we're doing where it is kind of on your own, with the exception of what's scheduled on for committee meetings and such. So I do like that we do have a couple of weeks to be able to kind of iron those specifics out before swearing in, so.
Commissioners, other comments or feedback? Commissioner?
Yeah, I too was impressed with Max France and his credentials, and share those with the, those who are here, that he has a Bachelor of Business Administration in Finance from Grand Valley State University. He's done internships with Merrill Lynch and the Principal Financial Group. So he, clearly from other, other activities he's had, both in the work environment and volunteer, he's had a lot of, he's got a lot of skills that will match our needs. My concern too is that we can work something out with his, his schedule, he did mention that. We don't expect staff to stay beyond 5:00 and work, work weekends, but there are other ways to communicate.
Look at these two down there, they're like, who?
Well, some of them do, yes.
There is a lot of technology out there today.
There is, that's right.
Yeah, well, and.
Except for our appointed officials.
elected officials? And I do think it's an important point that, you know, there's, there's a lot of technology available to us today.
Yeah.
That enables us to be available and be present, even if physically we're not there, and I know all of us have balanced that out as well.
Right, we just want to figure this out with our, with our staff, so I agree that we need to, we do have some time, but I'd like to hear from others.
Yeah, I just, I just wrote that I thought that Max was prepared, he was really informed about the role, he was thoughtful in his answers, I sensed that he was eager to do an excellent job, and I sensed, you know, it needs to be, it needs to happen, but a willingness to work with staff to meet the expectations of the job.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Moody?
I just have some, someone readiness on the basis that in being appointed to this position, will you run for it? And I had some concerns also in reference to the fact that resume is great, and I too enjoyed interviewing him, but that was my major concern, is are you going to run for the position? And then we, if you're not, then we'd be in the same position as we were, looking for a candidate to run and win. I think that's important. If you're going to be appointed, as I was, I think you ought to run for it.
Well, there may be, there may be some other people who decide to run too, so.
Yeah, but at least he'll be in the door.
That's true, that's true. That's true. Commissioner Jones, any final comments, and then I'll ask for someone to make a formal motion.
Yeah, I too am in support of Mr. France, based on his credentials and his understanding of what the expectations are for the role. I think that, given the fact that we have a couple of weeks to, before swearing in takes place, it would be my hope that we can go ahead and work something out, and that his schedule would be flexible enough to appease both the office as well as his daytime job, so.
Great, thanks. All right.
I'll make the motion.
All right, I have a motion to.
Support.
And support to move forward with appointing Mr. Max France to city comptroller. Commissioners, any other questions or comments?
I just want to make sure I didn't finish saying what I wanted the motion to be, but, but everything you said, Mayor, and, you know, with the contingency that we can work out the schedule for him and for the department, and I, I think it was as much of a concern for him as it was, you know, the need for the department, so we want to, you know, take care of that within the motion.
All right. All right, any other questions?
Well, yes, now, did you want to rephrase your motion?
Yeah, that was the rest of it, so what the mayor said with the contingent portion about the scheduling.
Okay.
Being resolved.
Okay.
Yeah.
Time out, sorry. So the resolution is to make an appointment.
Mm-hmm.
So if, if he says, no, I don't want to do that, that he doesn't take the oath, then you're, then you reopen?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're exactly clear what you're requesting.
Absolutely.
All right.
And that, but that doesn't have to be in the motion, I just, your question is valid to ask, yeah.
Mm-hmm. All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. Nice.
I just want to make one point, on, on the 17th, when he takes the oath of office, he's in office immediately.
Yes.
Everybody else has to wait till January 1.
Yes. Thank you for clarifying. And I see Mr. France in the audience, congratulations. You heard our, our conversation up here, so we'll trust that you will follow up appropriately.
I will.
All right, thank you, thank you, congratulations. All right, next that will take us to our scheduled public hearings. We have one item before us tonight, and this is a public hearing considering a noise variance request by the Michigan Department of Transportation in connection with improvements to I-196 from Market Avenue to 131. So moved.
Support.
All right, so our city engineer is here tonight to tee this up, and I know I saw a representative from MDOT, oh, there you are, I thought you were in the back. So, so we'll start, and then we'll, we'll have our guests come and speak, and then we'll open it up for questions from this body, and then if you are here tonight to be heard on this public hearing, then I'll open it up after that for you to be heard. Welcome.
All right, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Commissioners. Tonight, first of all, I'd like to introduce Mr. Art Green and Ms. Karastine. They are here on behalf of MDOT with the local transportation service center and able to answer any questions that may come up this evening. But just to give a little bit of background about what this project entails and what the public hearing is for, the project limits you see before you on the screen, and involves I-196 from Market Avenue to US 131. MDOT is proposing to do some improvements beginning in May, lasting through October of 2020. That will involve some concrete repairs, bridge repairs, pavement milling, and resurfacing. Our city's noise control ordinance though prohibits activity between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM, except for essential services, and while most of the essential services listed in our ordinance are construction activities, major highway and bridge construction is not specifically listed. So in order to minimize disruption and delays, MDOT's requesting this, some work to be performed at night, up to a maximum of 75 intermittent days. Included in the night work variance will be up to four weekend freeway closures, two eastbound and two westbound, that will be necessary for the concrete repairs. Extremely loud operations, though, such as bridge deck demolition and sheet pile driving will still be prohibited between those hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. MDOT has mailed postcards to all owners represented within 600 feet of these project limits, which is shown by the red outline on your screen. And they also plan to hold an informational public meeting prior to the start of construction in May. So tonight, we are not seeking any action, this is merely the public hearing, it will then be referred to the Community Development Committee on December 17th for action. So with that, be happy to answer any questions, along with Mr. Green and Ms. Stein, either now or after the public hearing is closed.
All right. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Breckman? All right. Mr. Green, would you like to make any comments, or Ms. Stein, anything to add?
Thanks, thanks for having us. This project, not unlike a lot of others we've done in the area, just to kind of frame this, is this a very old section of freeway. The rehab we have planned here will increase the friction value on even the concrete pavement. We're going to be actually adding a high friction surface to the, to the top of that that should minimize and obviously cause more friction between the vehicle and the surface, even in some of those unclimbed type environments. So very important to us, the project that we've been had on the books for quite some time and are happy to get to, and so appreciate you guys' support. We will definitely have communications in the past as a premium. We do understand how much of a disruption this is to get the work done, but we're hoping when we're all done, that there'll be a significant improvement, even though it's just a rehabilitation.
Great, thanks. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Kelly?
Just a comment that this, you know, just so people know, that this is going to take up to 75 nights of work between May and the end of October. Fortunately, it's at night, but can you give us a sense of how much of a traffic, what the traffic condition will be like in that stretch then, like during the day? Will the equipment be?
Yes, we'll have lane closures during, during the days when we're doing the actual concrete repairs. What we have to do is cut out the small pieces of concrete, replace those where the joints are failing, and then get that pretty much to a smooth condition again, then we'll put on that high friction surface on the concrete. The milling and paving is on the asphalt portions of the roadway, which are closer to 131. So we'll have daily closures for, you know, that, that timeframe, however, there are some weekend closures in order to do some bridge work and surfacing there. A couple of the bridges, as you probably all have noticed, is well in need of doing resurfacing too, and we'll be getting at those primarily at the interchange of M45.
Okay, great, thanks. All right, Commissioners, any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, all right. So if you want to take a seat, I'll open up for pop comment, and then if there are questions that you can answer, I'll have you come back up. So if you're here tonight to be heard on this noise ordinance, now's an opportunity to come forward. Same rules apply, we ask that you share your name, the city that you live in, and we'll give you up to three minutes to speak. So are you, is anyone here to be heard on this noise variance? Hi, welcome.
Hi, thanks. Do you want a copy of this?
Yes, if you have a copy. Great, thanks.
Hi, my name is Bruce Morrison, I live in the city of Grand Rapids, actually live on Sunset Avenue, which is actually up the hill from the highway. As you're leaving town going west, I live in one of those houses up on the bluff. MDOT's planning on doing significant work on this highway in 2020. Nearby residents would like MDOT to address the substantial noise coming from traffic on the freeway between Bridge and the exit for Lake Michigan Drive, M45. Obviously, we're not going to stop the noise, and we'll have to go along with the variance, but I guess I'm asking for a little bit of trade here. Unlike most neighborhoods next to I-196, the residents of Sunset Avenue, the southern parts of Scott Avenue and Ballpark Boulevard live above the freeway, so the noise is particularly loud as it rises from the road surface. Note that over 90% of these houses were constructed prior to 1976, and before I-196 was built in 1962, 64, as outlined in the MDOT Scoping Manual, pages 214 and 824, which I referenced below here. We residents would ask that, if possible, noise abatement walls be placed next to the westbound lanes between Bridge Street and the exit for Lake Michigan Drive. MDOT, we ask that MDOT replace the cement roadway with materials that wouldn't make as much noise like asphalt, that will minimize tire noise as vehicles pass by, although I just heard they're just going to use concrete. But I have some other solutions here. We ask that evergreen trees be planted in lieu of the top canopy Norway maples, which do little to help absorb the noise in the woods next to the westbound roadway. This one's high on my list. We would like signs to be posted on the eastbound highway before Lake Michigan Drive that would restrict use of engine braking, otherwise known as Jake braking, as semi-tractor trailers head down into the valley. Especially in the morning, when people are still sleeping, you hear this awful sound of [makes noise] as they're trying to brake, going into the curve heading into downtown. It's very loud, so I'm asking that maybe those signs be posted so they aren't able to do that. Finally, speed limits could be reduced to cut back on the composite vehicle noise and to ensure safety. It seems accidents per mile are probably higher here than elsewhere due to the curves in the road. There's warning signs that say 45 miles per hour, yet speed limit signs say 65 miles per hour, and to us, that doesn't make any sense. That's what I have, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison, appreciate your input. All right, anyone else who wishes to be heard on the noise variance? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close that public comment period. Are anything to add or respond to based on Mr. Morrison's comments, or if you want to connect with him?
I can, I can do both. The, as I understand it, the, the noise itself from the freeway, we will be applying a surface on top of that concrete. So we're going to cut out the sections in order to get the faults out of them, so that's the real bang-bang noise of the trailers and all that kind of thing that goes by. So we'll get that smooth first, you got to replace the concrete patches. On top of that concrete, old and the new patches, we placing a friction surface, it's kind of a, it's kind of a thin, a proxy-type surface, it's not exactly asphalt, but what it will do is level in, in most, you know, in most, you know, instances, probably dampen sound because you're going to have more of a smooth ride. That's the goal of the project, two things, make it a laminar surface and then provide more friction between the vehicle's tires and the, and the road surface than today. You're, you're, you're spot on. The road is, is original construction, started in the late 50s into the early 60s, it was built, we've diamond ground in order to make smooth that roadway, I think, at least twice. We can't do that anymore, because the re-still and the concrete is going to get closer to the top, and that becomes more of a liability. So what we're going to try to endeavor upon doing is making that pavement last a little bit longer. Our challenges with our whole network, particularly in those older concrete sections, we're kind of running out of resources, running out of things to do. This will be, as far as I understand it, a, probably the largest project that MDOT has done with that friction-type surface. We've only done those types of projects on like unique ramps or curves and that kind of thing in very short spans. This is going to be quite extensive for the exact purpose that you're bringing up. The, the trees, that is something that we can certainly look at doing, we do have resources for those things, however, I do want to point out that pine trees are, in our practice, more, I guess, a visual effect than they are really a sound dampening, particularly given the elevation change. It's just very difficult to place walls or anything else that would actually, you know, dampens, dampen sound, you know, from the very bottom of the river valley all the way up to maybe where those houses are. You're talking walls that would change the landscape of the city of Grand Rapids on the west side. It's really.
We're not a fan of those, so.
It's particularly beautiful coming into downtown from there, and, and not to say that the soil isn't, so sound is an issue, but I think our, our treatment is definitely our goal for the sound. If we can get there, we'll do the best, you know, the best we can. Back in the early 2000s, we placed a section of that with asphalt, starting at lane and going into, going into the freeway. That changed things for those. things for those residents at that time. Uh, that was, uh, old concrete, lumpy and lumpy and that kinda thing. And, uh, we're gonna get there. Uh, obviously, you've seen us work a lot on the east side and the, you know, the west side is the next frontier, but we gotta get it there, you know, in, in our program. Uh, the last thing is speed. Um, I, I don't wanna go on about speed. That is a, a process that's shared between Michigan State Police and MDOT. Uh, the, uh, the, the warning signs are appropriate. Um, however, eighty-fifth percentile speed still does govern the actual posted regulatory speed. Uh, the, the warning seats, signs are only there to recognize the geometry of the road and, and how that operates. So that's no different than any county road you drive on. If you have statutory speed at fifty-five, we're posted at sixty-five where you're recommended to slow down. Um, vehicle code is still founded on the fact that the driver has responsibility of operating the vehicle safely. And we can't be in every car, so that's how we, how we, we work that out. So, that's what I got.
Thank you. Appreciate that follow-up. All right. So I'll close that public comment period, uh, or public hearing, and then it'll come back to, um, community development, I believe, is what I heard. All right. So next that will take us to our last opportunity for public comment tonight. Again, the same rules apply, and I'm gonna start this. Um, we had a request for accommodation, so, um, as I open up this public hearing, same rules apply. We ask that you share your name, the city that you live in. Um, you'll get, have up to three minutes to speak, and I'll start with Mr. Arizona.
I think it will work.
Yep.
I'd like to believe that-
Yep. Can you, can you hold that up to your mouth, sir?
Oh, I'm good, just like this.
Okay.
I would like to believe that all of you are involved in making the accommodations for me today. I did receive the alert from Anita Hitchcock and, uh-
Can't hear him. Can't hear him.
Yeah. Can you hold the microphone so we can hear you?
Uh, no. This is good right here.
Okay.
You need to listen. So, three points I'm trying to make is first, I'm showing gratitude from, for all of you. The second point is, in reading, uh, the press, I, uh, wanna make a comment on what Anita Leonier's point was in, uh, a community of people that are being left behind. I think there was forty or more percent, uh, blacks that are, uh, I think, uh, not being served or being left behind. Parks not being developed. With that being said, whether you fully understand or not, we have to believe, because you are just black and white, that our Hispanic community is far more left behind. So there are many people within the community that are falling through the cracks. I believe that the idea to expand this council is better than the way that it sits now. There would probably need to be more commissioners to represent the three wards, or more wards with commissioners. It's gotta be very difficult for two of you. Um, I can say that I lived in all three wards, and I currently live in the second ward. Most of my life I spent in the Grand Rapids area. My family's the largest. Over one thousand of us come out of that community. My, um, third, um, comment is, I don't think that these meetings are for, uh, a group of people. They're really like a shutdown. To shut down. They done this and they can't count a commission. To our commissioners, to our elected officials here twice, I think that you guys, in the same way that you address all these things on the agenda, you need to address the issue that they're asking you to address. Whether they're all from here or not, they are citizens, and these meetings are, are, are right for us to assemble and to come to a resolve. It's your fault if they continue to do what they do unless you address what they're asking you to do. I don't agree with what they're doing to the extent that these sessions are being shut down. And you guys have to do something. In the same way Anita Leonier wants you to address the poor is and the greater majority which are, are black, you also need to address these things too.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I wanna say-
I appreciate your coming.
Thank you too. And I will try to do it another time.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for coming down. All right. Others who wish to be heard? Yep, these are general comments, Mr. Davis, so you can get in line there. Hi, welcome.
Hi, my name is Ladonna Norman. I'm here to address the housing. Um, I keep hearing more things about, um, developments and condos going up downtown, and I don't think that's gonna fix our housing crisis. This might be my last meeting because I have to give up my car insurance. I have to choose between car insurance and bills, and I'm okay with that. Um, I just wish that you cared about the black people that are being displaced here because they're still moving out at a rapid pace. Um, they're understaffed at the shelters. They're overcrowded. There's some safety concerns. Um, and everybody keeps throwing affordable housing around, and we've really never got a definition of affordable housing. It sounds good verbally, but when you put it on paper and you talk about poor black people in Grand Rapids, they're getting anywhere from seven hundred to twelve hundred dollars a month, and that is poverty level. The apartments that are being built in Grand Rapids and Wyoming and surrounding areas, if they allow low-income people, there's a lottery system. So that means everybody doesn't get that chance. This is a vital part of what I do in Grand Rapids and how I wanna advocate, 'cause it's really, I'm more concerned about the children and the effects that it has on the children. Because if a parent isn't healthy and balanced, they cannot be healthy and balanced for their child. And they're not healthy and balanced being homeless. They're not healthy and balanced having to choose between food and clothes or food and laundry. That's not balance. You're, you do us no service when you sit up here and you throw the word affordable housing around, but yet you're not solving anything. I came and I talked before this council at Alger Middle School about, uh, a person who is being bullied by a property management company. But instead of her getting help from the city of Grand Rapids, she got a Santee, and she got resources, and she got more phone numbers. It seems like I live in a city where people don't mind sending emails and playing phone tag, and we're never gonna resolve anything like that. We will not resolve anything by giving, giving dual resources out, 'cause I give dual resources out all day. The same thing you do, and you get paid for it, I do it for free for the community. I serve the community for free. All right? And it, it saddens me that you know exactly what you're gonna do when it comes to economics in downtown, but you don't know what you're gonna do when it comes to housing and the poor people and the people that are being displaced and have a problem with that. Um, I hope that you listen, and someone can contact me regarding the housing issue because I can go a little worried about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Norman. All right. Others wish to be heard?
My name's David Davis. I live here in Grand Rapids, and, uh, I wish I had been, uh, more prepared on this, uh, toy gun thing because there's something that's very important that's being passed through the legislature as we speak. Uh, I understand, uh, Commissioner Reparts and the other commissioners concerned about, uh, people having a lifetime, uh, stigma on their, uh, record for mis- misdemeanors. This past few, couple of days, uh, State Representative LaGrande spoke on one of the radio stations about a new bill that's just passed the House and, uh, is expected to pass the legislation. It has to do with expungement of minor crimes. They are, the state is expanding it vastly, and it will be a big help with those people that get to, uh, misdemeanors and, uh, other crimes that could be held against them later on. But it'd be a process that they'd have to go through. And I think that this is a good idea because there are a lot of people that, uh, pick up a minor crime when they're young and, uh, they could have it expunged at a later date. Another thing I'd like to bring up is we are into the winter season again, and I've been into walking the sidewalks. As most of you know, I walk the sidewalks, ride the bus, and when there, where there permits, I ride my bike. And, uh, last winter, I had a lot of trouble with, uh, different businesses. They plow their city parking lot, or their parking lots for their business, but leave the city sidewalks covered with snow and ice, which makes it hazardous for pedestrians. And I've had a number of them tell me, "Oh, that's a city sidewalk. Uh, we have no responsibility to take care of it." I believe that our city ordinance on, uh, clearing the sidewalks includes businesses, and I would like for the, uh, city businesses to be notified that they also have to clear the city sidewalks so that the pedestrians can walk by their businesses without slipping and falling. And I just had that, uh, the last few days with the snowfall we had here, I went out Michigan Avenue. There were a number of businesses that hadn't cleared. Uh, there's some on Monroe Avenue, there was some on Leonard, and, uh, different streets. And, uh, I think to keep our city safe and that, that these businesses should be notified that they are, uh, to keep their city sidewalks clear as well as their city, their parking lots for the business. And that, that's about all I have to say tonight. Thank you much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Thank you. All right. Others wish to be heard?
Hi, good evening. My name is Quinn Burke. I live on the northeast side. I'm here as an ally with Movimiento Coastecha as well as GR Rapid Response to ICE. Um, I'm here again to remind you that the immigrant community has been asking for a resolution for Grand Rapids to pass, um, for Grand Rapids to support the licenses for all campaign. There's like nine resolutions on the agenda that I read, one of them being, um, should we allow fireworks to play at the Nutcracker? Like, that kind of resolution is, is doing really nothing to address, um, a more serious issue, which, um, would be that the immigrant community drives with fear, um, which is, uh, not okay. So immigrants, um, serve, live, work, contribute to our community, the whole entire state of Michigan, and undocumented folks do not have access to a driver's license. We know that the city itself does not issue driver's licenses, but the city has the power to support, um, and draft like, you know, a fancy letter that the immigrant community has been asking for, um, for months. Um, we believe that if you support the immigrant community like you all, uh, seem to have said that you do, that you would take the simple action like four or five other cities in the state have already done and pass an actual resolution, uh, maybe include it on the agenda so we don't have to continue to shut down the meetings. Um, but the immigrant community, uh, knows what it needs, um, the most. I'm here as an ally telling you, um, with my privilege of being able to drive with a license without fear, um, that you need to pass a resolution now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. All right. Others wish to be heard?
Hello. I'm Karen Myers. I live in Comstock Park. I'm also an organizer with Movimiento Coastecha, and I'm also part of the core team of GR Rapid Response to ICE, which is a network of volunteers who work to support the members of our commu- community who have been hurt by ICE violence here. Um, it's really disappointing to see that the city commissioners, commissioners have again failed to put licenses for all resolution on the agenda. You have said that you support licenses for all. You read to us the letter that you wrote to Governor Whitmer in support of it. What is keeping you from doing the simple act of passing the resolution? Just as city and county commissioners across the state have already done, we know that passing the resolution is not a difficult thing to do because the city of Kalamazoo, Kalamazoo County, Washtenaw, Washtenaw County, and Detroit City have now all passed the resolution very easily, the licenses for all resolution. There are several different resolutions that you passed today, including a resolution, as Quinn mentioned, to allow the ballet to set off fireworks during the Nutcracker, one that awarded a billion-dollar contract to a company for street lighting, a resolution to approve the mayor's request to travel to Washington DC in January. Surely, you don't think that supporting the Grand Rapids immigrant community is less important than the ability of the ballet to set off fireworks during the Nutcracker? The Grand Rapids immigrant community has been asking for this resolution for months now. We are all aware the city does not issue driver's licenses. However, the passage of this resolution is a simple act requested by the affected community. Passing this resolution tells the immigrant community that you see them, that you hear them, that you li- are listening to them, that you welcome their full and equal participation in our community. Immigrant labor harvests and serves our food, constructs and maintains our homes, it serves, and serves in a myriad of other ways throughout our city. But without a driver's license, these same people, these same immigrants are unable to participate fully in the community that they call home. Grand Rapids proudly calls itself a welcoming city, but how can you feel welcome when you cannot drive your child to school or a sick loved one to the doctor without fear of being pulled over and detained and/or deported by ICE, as we see those of us who work with Rapid Response to ICE happens regularly here? Please do listen to what the immigrant community has told you. Pass the resolution now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Others wish to be heard? Hi, welcome.
My name's Deandre Jones. First of all, I'd like to, uh, congratulate the city of Grand Rapids. I see that you guys got a gold certification for the second time this year for sustainability. I think that's pretty cool. Um, like to eventually have a, uh, L-E, um, LED, uh, green building. That's a goal of mine. I believe I can achieve this. Um, also, um, I like to talk about my work at Link Up. So within, I believe, the past two weeks, I worked with about four hundred people, um, serving about four hundred people or more with Link Up. Um, first of all, we did a turkey drive, and it was pretty cool. I got to meet a lot of different people on the south side, and I had to sign up about a hundred-plus people, just people, um, seeing people needing food, and I'm just seeing the demand of, um, just the needs of just housing and just food. And, uh, I'm not one of the people that tries to make everything bad, but just, uh, try to find solutions. So, um, if there's anybody that, or any commissioners that happens to know anybody that's donating extra food or maybe have some contacts, like a Golden Foods or Spartan Foods, that'd be pretty cool because I watched about two hundred people get a turkey and a ham, but then I watched about a hundred people almost walk off because there was no food left or they didn't have the specific thing that they wanted. So I like to see it more of a demand, potentially food on people from the south side, 'cause it's already a kind of a housing crisis, but seeing people actually that they might not have a Thanksgiving dinner or just food, uh, it's kinda, it's kinda sad, but, um, like I said, I'm just always the one to just keep high hopes and just hope that eventually the community will keep pouring to others, just as the community members are pouring to the community. Also, um, I just volunteered today at Eastern Avenue Church over there on Bemis, and I was, uh, doing a free food pantry, and it was pretty cool. I got to work with a lot of different people, pushed a lot of carts. I felt like I was working at Meyer. It was crazy. But, um, I just got to push a lot of carts and being able to help a lot of people, and I just love being a helping hand, um, here in the city of Grand Rapids. Also, I wanna thank you guys on creating the Safe Pitch Task Force because from my year journey from winning the ten thousand dollar grant, I went to the Forbes Summit. I met people, uh, that actually created an esports. So, so that's something that I wanna implement in my program. Esports is a billion-dollar, um, market, and it's not even mainstream yet. And so that's something that I actually wanna implement into my program. Once I get a facility, I'm working, I'm, I'm putting work into the trenches, and I believe I'm gonna manifest and create something very beautiful that will actually change the world. It's something that a lot of people haven't tapped into. If you look at it, Jeff Bezos actually invested into Twitch, which is actually something that goes into esports. So he's seen a return on an investment, a lot more than that than just, uh, Amazon and, um, things like that. But, um, just with that being said, I'm just happy to be a Grand Rapids resident, um, hoping to bring some implementive changes and hopefully change the school systems also with my deals. Thank you.
Thank you, Deandre. All right. Others wish to be heard? Hi, welcome.
Hi, good evening. My name's Bobby Hilliard, and I live in Grand Rapids, and I'm also a voter in the second ward. I'm gonna try to read everything so I don't miss anything.
Okay.
I would like to bring up a major concern that, um, occurred in my neighborhood on Saturday, November the twenty-fourth and Saturday, November the twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen. I feel that my rights as a citizen and a homeowner in the Grand Rapids area was violated due to instruction given to the Grand Rapids Police Department by Carrie Rivette. She's a waste manage, she's wastewater, stormwater maintenance superintendent for the city of Grand Rapids. I was called by a female at the Grand Rapids Police Department on Sunday, November the twenty-fifth, letting me know that Carrie Rivette had instructed them to not to send a police officer to my neighbor- a police officer to my neighborhood if it was water-related. I wasn't told this information on Saturday, November the twenty-fourth, when I called four times to have someone to come out to my home, because my neighbor was pumping, and some guy was pumping water into our backyard. We are aware of the easement that, that's behind our home. Well, we were told the easement is there for natural water, like your sun pump pumps water out, and rainwater that's coming through. But, these two, first of all, it's two gentlemen. I called the first time because we noticed that it was a loud noise. We came home, and I went upstairs, and in the backyard, there was a pump, a big machine in our neighbor's yard next to us. We have a zero-lot line house. We have two separate homes, but they're connected by a garage, which has a firewall, so they call it a zero-lot line. They had a machine that was pumped, they had two hoses, a blue hose and a red hose. One hose was coming from our neighbor next to the other house next to us, pumping water out of their basement into their yard, into our yard. Our backyard was a pond. It, we had a pond in our backyard, from the water that they were pumping. So I called nine-one-one, because I wanted to make sure that someone came out, because we didn't wanna confront the people that were doing this. I called the first time, really nice people. She said that she would try to get somebody out. I was okay with that, but no one came. I called the second time, because we noticed that there were two men who had came to the device, the, it, it was, um, a generator and a pump and all this. So we noticed two guys were in the corner of the fence, working out back there. So I called and let them know, "Hey, it's two guys back here now." Then no one came, but the nine-one-one operator, I have to say, was very nice. She kept saying, "They're busy. We'll get them out as soon as we can." I was okay with that. The third call I called, because-
Ms. Hiller, I'm sorry.
Okay. Let me, let me get to the end of this. What I wanted to say is that because of, um, Carrie Rivette's instruction to the police, the police was not able to do his job, because when he came out, we had taken pictures. I just wanted a, a report, so we could take it downtown.
And ma'am, we will, we will have somebody follow up. In fact, I see, I see, uh, Asante following up now.
All right.
And if we can get some, some more information from you, we'll be sure to follow up on that. Thank you for, thank you for bringing it to our attention. Appreciate that. All right. Others wish to be heard?
Hello. My name's John Bursey. I live on the west side, and I guess next week, you are having meetings on messing up the roads more so downtown. Ottawa and I only, I wanna change to two-way, and Fulton, anybody that goes down Division after four o'clock in the afternoon knows how much that worked. I'm being sarcastic, changing it from a four-way, or four lanes to two lanes. I was, I was even trying to come southbound on Division, just from the Lyon to Fulton, took like fifteen minutes this afternoon. A cop car could barely get through there this afternoon at four forty-five. Tow truck couldn't get through, and had to go around, uh, go around by the college or the library, 'cause it couldn't get through. And now, with the traffic at Manando, y'all really are thinking about putting bike lanes on Fulton Street, and changing Fulton Street from Division to Market, from four lanes to two lanes, and messing it up like y'all did on Division. You know, that really needs to be rethought, along with Division and, uh, along with, not Division, but up there at, uh, this is a totally separate one, but up there at Leonard, Leonard and Turner, where y'all messed up going underneath the highway there. And I'm just kinda very disappointed in, in the roads here. I've lived here for seventeen years, and, and last couple of years, a lot of the roads have been reconfigured for the worse, not the better. And with my other minute, I will say, GR is the second-largest city in Grand Rapids, with the le- least amount of stuff to do. Y'all have bars, breweries, museums, and churches. Other than that, there's not much, there's not much. And unfortunately, the only real museum y'all had, a block before the hospital that used to be on Jefferson, over, oh, about twenty years ago, y'all closed it down. It was like a natural history museum. Um, and it's kinda disappointing that y'all closed that. And I am happy with the commissioner wanting to change the, uh, change it from a misdemeanor to a fine, because I have no faith in the DA's office, especially when one person, uh, when the DA's office, the, when Kuiper was charged, uh, charged with the DUI, he co- he covered for the DA's, the DA's office covered for Kuiper and GR BD for assaulting my friend at Spectrum. And also, one person in GR can be charged, charged for sending a mess, a text message about medicine, yet another person that harasses somebody on the phone continuously does not get charged, and they all go through the city attorney's office.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your comments. All right. Anyone else who wishes to be heard? All right. See you none. I'm gonna close that opportunity for public comment, and I will turn to my colleagues, and I'll start down here with Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanna thank everyone for coming out on this evening to speak, uh, to the various, uh, topics on the agenda, and even those who came out who didn't, um, speak as well. Appreciate your presence. So I wanna thank my colleagues, Commissioner Kelly and Commissioner Repart for their work in revising the, uh, the ordinance, and I want to, again, um, say congratulations to Mr. France on his appointment to, uh, the comptroller position.
All right. Commissioner Lanier?
Thank you. Um, just like to quickly thank everyone for coming out and the comments that were made this evening. Thank you, Mr. DeLong, for sharing the information about Habitat, and, um, doing that research from this morning till this evening to get more details about their process. And, um, congratulations, Mr. France, on your appointment.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Repart?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. It was another long day of good work together. Uh, appreciate all of you up here, and I was, I'm gonna save my comments for Commissioner Kelly. You have one more meeting, so you can't let up yet. But we're gonna miss you.
Don't be bad.
Today was, today was an example of all the things that you add to our commission.
Yeah.
Just wanna thank everybody for coming out. Congratulations to Mr. France. Looking forward to working with you.
Thanks. Commissioner Kelly?
I, I wanna add my congratulations and welcome, and thank you all for coming out tonight. I wanna also thank staff for all your work, particularly tonight, um, our clerk who kept us on track, as much as we were muddling through so many issues. When you start making amendments, it gets confusing, so thank you for that. And again, thank you to all of our staff, who sit, sit through these meetings in the evening after, long hours after five.
City clerk?
I just wanted a referee flag.
City attorney? City manager?
Thank you, uh, Mayor and commissioners. I wanna reiterate the, my appreciation for everyone here tonight, as well as the staff for, uh, their work in, um, preparing for this, uh, day.
Thank you. And, um, I will end by also giving my congratulations to Mr. France. And, uh, also, as I walked into the chambers tonight, I was reminded that this is going to be my second-to-last meeting with Commissioner Kelly. And, uh, having served around this table with you for ten years, I'm, I'm very sad to see you go. You have been just absolutely amazing, uh, to serve with. Uh, you have such a big heart and a servant's heart, and you're probably one of the hardest working people I've ever worked with. Um, so I invite all of you to join us in celebrating and thanking Commissioner Kelly as we have a, um, celebration of her service and dedication to our city, uh, next Wednesday, December eleventh, at five o'clock, at Creston Brewery on the second floor. Everyone is welcome. And, uh, with that being said, I'm, I'm sad to see Commissioner Kelly go, but I'm looking forward to serving with Commissioner Alakia Sassi. I know that you have been hard at work, uh, already getting, going through orientation and training, and, uh, getting teed up to hit the ground running, which I know that you will do, and I know that you will always have a friend and mentor and supporter in Commissioner Kelly, um, as she bids farewell to, to this work. And I love that Commissioner, uh, former Commissioner Mary Alice Williams is here tonight. Also wanna recognize her. Uh, she was recently recognized as one of our community sixteen over sixty, and several of us around this table, uh, were there to, to really honor her that night. Your entire lifetime has been about empowering and supporting other people, and especially women, uh, and I know many of us want to just say publicly how much we appreciate you. So, good to have you here tonight. Uh, and with that, we will adjourn. Have a good night.